My apologies, we'll start in one minute. Never mind. Or I could send it around. Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the, special meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Mathie.
Here.
Alderman Sage. Alderman Malamway.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. And we're gonna go ahead and start with public comment. We have, just in terms of public comment, we do have a mayor's open house. I had one last Friday. I just have one on Friday before a Monday city council meeting. And sometimes I can get people answers or problems solved on the spot, depending on what they are. Mr. Rasmussen was kind enough to be there for the entire time on Friday, this past Friday. So if you want problems answered quickly, or if you want answers, or you wanna engage in a dialogue, that's the place to go. Public comment, we don't respond. So I'm just letting you know that. And so I will count the time. We have up to half an hour. There are more people who have asked to speak than will be able to speak. So I will ask you to be as brief as possible. If you can succinctly state something, I'd appreciate it. And I think everybody else who is in line to speak will appreciate it. You have up to three minutes apiece. And if you can avoid repetition, that would be great. So with all those provisos in line, I will go ahead and read these in groups of three. Jeff Mizell, actually, the first three are Jeff Mizell. Okay. And then we have Paul Kinsella and Ron Longstret. And those are the first three. So I'll call them in groups of three. Jeff Mizell.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Jeff Lindsay, I'm an attorney on behalf of the Mizell family and all similarly situated parties hereafter identified at some point. The issues that I see in this case are that we're trying to define an easement for access to Lake Bloomington. Mizells are leasehold-
Can I call a point of order? This gentleman was not on the list.
We don't allow people to-
So you are not, you're saying you are the attorney?
Yes. Right. The first name is Jeff. They asked for Jeff.
But you are not, you are not from the Mizell family?
No, that's correct.
Okay, we need a spokesperson from the Mizell family unless you fill out a, if you fill out a separate card and they call your name, you can come up. But, thank you very much. I misunderstood. I'm terribly sorry, but you cannot speak. Under our ordinance, this is not me telling you you can't speak. I did not realize you were an attorney representative. Sorry. Okay. Is there someone from the Mizell fa- was Jeff Mizell, is there?
Yeah. So-
I'm sorry.
The person indicated they wanted a first name of the person who'd be speaking on behalf of-
Correct. And that's, yeah. I apologize for the misunderstanding there. Okay. So we have Paul Kinsella, Ron Longstret, and Jack Penn.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Kinsella. I live at the lake. There should be a document coming around. I wanted to talk to you specifically about my doc that I share with my neighbors, Ron in Wantita, Longstret, Nate in Alley Green, and the late Army Sepke. I prepared four exhibits in your packet to consider. The first packet is, Exhibit A is when I purchased this home 11 years ago. It was advertised as a private lake access with two locations for only 10 houses. The realtor advertised that because that was the understanding in the agreement. I, at that time, realized I needed more than a realtor's confirmation on that. So Exhibit B, you will see my purchase agreement. And on the third page, you will see, I wrote my offer contingent on the ability, buyer wants to be, to confirm with the city that he can put boat dock addition improvements. And that was a contingent offer in my purchase agreement. You can see it's crossed out and initialled because I satisfied that contingency by talking with Craig Cummings 11 years ago, who gave me permission and confirmation of what the realtor had told me about purchasing the home. Exhibit C, the lake lot lease, I did not include a copy, but obviously the council has the lake lot lease. There's been some discussion of whether this is a public or private easement. The lease that I have signed has the following statement in paragraph 11, "City grants to lessy an easement for access to Lake Bloomington over property owned by the city lying between the shoreline of Lake Bloomington and the boundary of leased premises." Nowhere in that sentence does it say the word "public." And the public does not pay a lease. I pay a lake lot lease. I purchased the home with that understanding. The financial decision of the value of the home was certainly considered because of that. Exhibit D will be the permission and the permit that we got from Craig Cummings on August 26, 2009. You can see the last two sentences there, that your dock expansion looks fine. I've provided a copy to the engineering department. It wasn't just his word alone. He provided the permit, the drawings, the specifications to the engineering department. Consider this email as permission to proceed with construction. So I would urge the city council to understand that all these situations, these 18, are not all the same, to look at them individually. I have had my home appraised and refinanced in 11 years I've lived there. One appraiser took lake premises into account, one did not. There's a difference of $100,000. So this isn't just about the convenience of having a boat dock. Thank you.
And that, let's see, you were, Ron, let's see, Ron Longstret, or you're Paul?
Paul Kinsella, dock number five.
Paul, I'm sorry. These, I apologize. Let's see, Ron is next, and then Jack Penn, and then David Brockman.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me out. I bought my property out here at Lake Bloomington in 1976. And I bought it from Richard Thomas Realty here in town. And when I bought the property, they said you have a right-of-way down at the lake, at the end of the Trelingham Lane right-of-way, and you will share it with others off sites. So I'm sharing the same lot with Paul Kinsella. I've maintained that property. When we bought it, or when we bought, when we got it, it was kinda like a drainage ditch. And we brought fill-in, put seawalls in, backfilled, and we added a dock to it back in 1978. Then later on, we put, after we talked to Cummings, we put two docks on there. And our docks are straight from Menards, so they meet city code. The one thing I would like to point out is that, like Paul says, this is more of a private situation because it says in our lease that we can use it for swimming and boating and fishing. But yet on your own city sheets, it says no swimming, bathing, or wading allowed. This is public area. So to me, that says that that's a private area. What I would like to propose is that I know the city's hurting for money. I would like to have the city take and put the, these additional docks, issue us temporary, or issue permits for them, and have that permit money turned around and put in, or applied on our lease we get every year from the state, or from the state, from the city. And I propose about $50, that would cover the cost. Here's one thing, the city wins on that deal because our right-of-way has four leaseholders on it. That's $200 coming in just from one lot. The other thing to consider is that if the price of a house goes down, most of us have our leases set up that apply to the valuation of the house. So if our house valuation goes down, the city gets less money for our lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Jack Penn, David Brockman, and Jim Koehl.
Thank you very kindly for calling me up. My situation's a little different. I've been at the lake for quite some time. And my main concern is the seawalls in the area. I am hearing now that the lake is gonna get pumped down quite a ways. If the lake gets pumped down five, six, seven foot, that's gonna be hard on the seawalls because the water supports the walls. I put mine in 40 years ago. It's in good shape now. And every winter, you start worrying about it because the lake goes down. It was down six foot this year. And my big concern right now is the damage that's gonna be done to the seawalls in the whole lake area. Most all the houses have a seawall in front of them. That's my main concern. I've been up there for 58 years. So I've been around for a while. I thank you guys very much for listening to me. And that is my main concern right now.
Thank you very much. David Brockman, Jim, and again, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing your last name correctly, K-O-E-H-L, and then Ryan Esposito.
Thanks for the opportunity to address you. My name is David Brockman, and my wife and I, we purchased our place on Nighthawk Lane in 1987. At the time we purchased it, we were told that there was an understanding on the lake that the dock on the easement directly in front of our property would be shared by us and our neighbor directly to the south of us. I was informed that this was also the understanding on the other easements around the lake. Our neighbor, Ken Fitzgerald, purchased her place with the same understanding. The dock in question was installed in 1978 by owners prior to us. It's been there for 40 years now. For over 30 years, we have maintained this dock, kept the grass mowed on the easement, and removed debris from the waterway. We've been good stewards of our easement and have made very friendly relationships with our property owners adjacent to this easement. The city now tells us that we must remove our docks due to the water quality concerns. You've given us three choices to work with, all of which demand that we remove our dock, none of which are acceptable. If water quality were the real issue, the city would be addressing all the docks on the lake. They would not continue to issue more boat permits, and they would not be addressing the Mucky Duck Arena with all their many docks. We know that the problem originated with a few individuals who abused their privileges on the lake, and that brought the city's attention. The city should have the courage to address this on an individual basis and not broad-brush the problem by demanding that we all remove our docks. Many of us here tonight have consulted real estate agents about the effect of losing our docks. We have all received the same answer. It would reduce your property value by approximately 50 percent. The city council needs to be presented with options that include alternatives on how we can keep the use of our docks in question, not just ultimatums that state how we get rid of those docks off the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, again, K-O-E-H-L, I apologize for the mispronunciation. And then Ryan Esposito, and Jeff Lindsay. I believe that's Lindsay or Lindsay Ag? Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, my name is Jim Kael.
Kael, thank you.
K-O-E-H-L, that's German. I really didn't expect to talk tonight. And usually, I'm not really lucky at winning lotteries. And so I figured like tonight, I would probably be a winner, you know. So I'm not gonna take up much time because I'm kind of a new kid on the block down here. My wife and I bought a property right next to Jack Penn. And if you don't know where Jack Penn lives, you're probably at the wrong meeting. But anyhow, we moved into there, and we really, really enjoy Lake Bloomington, everything it has to offer. Soon after we got here, we realized there was a lot of stuff going on. That kinda was a little bit disappointing. So I'm not gonna, I've corresponded a little bit. People know where I live. They probably know why I've got a little bit of a concern. I'm not gonna go into all that. If I say too much, I'm gonna have a bunch of enemies. And my point is, coming down here, is to enjoy the lake, enjoy the people. And I love everyone in this room here. So I'm not gonna say too much. Because I, my main thought is, I would just really, really encourage the councils here to, if at all possible, make some decisions on this so that we can, we can move on. I'm a farm kid. I've, I've farmed, you know, lived on the same farm for six years. And whenever there's an issue, we deal with it. A lot of times, we deal with it, and we've gotta settle before the sun goes down. And I know down here, it's different. You know, we get into politics, things are different. They don't move that swiftly. But I would encourage you to make, make some decisions. Yet this year, next year, the year after, whenever, but get it done so we can move on with our life and we don't have to keep, keep dealing with all these, all these different issues. It just seems like tonight, you know, is, you know, it seems like this has already happened. You know, it seems like we've already, the last year or two, have had meetings, voiced our opinions, and everyone was, explained the situation. And so I'm a little bit uncertain why we're here tonight, opening this all up. It just seems like we should've been past this stage. So, you know, I just, I just pray, when I left, I prayed for the city council, I prayed for everyone that shows up here tonight, that this can be resolved peacefully, and that we can go on, move on with our lives, enjoy Lake Bloomington, and all the wonderful friends down here. God bless you. I don't have much else to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Esposito, Jeff, again, I think it's Lindsay, and then Gilbert Reyes.
On February 13, 2017, staff stated to council, "To clarify this, the intent of this ordinance change is from this point going forward. It doesn't impact anything that's out there today. I think we can all agree that if this statement were true, we would not be here tonight. I only ask that all eight options are considered with an open mind, and that protecting and enhancing the reservoir is given top priority. I do not understand how my dock on non-leased property affects the water quality any different than a dock that is on leased property. Both those of us who lease and do not lease are custodians of our land. We all have a common interest in every decision that is made regarding our home. We do not currently have representation on city council. I thank those of you who graciously offered your time to choose, or to listen to those of us with concerns. Based on that fact, my only option has been to deal directly with staff. On February 6, I sent an email stating, quote, 'Why was the letter that was hand-delivered to staff, written by my father, outlining the events from our side, not included in the binder? It should also be noted that I attached this letter to an email sent to staff on May 4, 2017.' The response I received on February 13 from staff was, quote, 'While the letter was given to Steve, it did not address or add any new information to what we'd already collected regarding your dock, so it stayed in Steve's notes. I find it perplexing that our side of the story in written form seems to have no merit in the eyes of staff. Staff has chosen to stop responding to any of my questions. Through a FOIA, I was informed that there are currently only 32 dock permits at Lake Bloomington. The inconsistent and possibly unlawful behavior of staff is very concerning to me, and I hope to you, as all of you as well.' The proposed ordinance change removes the power of the building, the power of the building department to grant permits at Lake Bloomington. It then transfers that power solely to the water director, one person. If docks are taken away from non-lakefront leaseholders, the value of their property will inevitably be affected, and the property value will decrease. This will impact the amount of money the city receives from those leaseholders since lease fees are based solely on equalized assessed value, revenue lost. Opening up the option for current non-leaseholders will provide the city with additional revenue stream. It's basically free money to the city that we are offering as an olive branch to accommodate their concerns. At a mere $250 per year, the city could generate an additional $22,500 in revenue to help protect and improve the reservoir over the next 10 years, all while not requiring any more services be provided beyond what is already in place. Both the Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Natural Resources have not been able to provide any documentation to me in regards to the effects a dock has on water quality. I requested information staff has found in their research be forwarded to me. I'm still waiting for their response. As someone who is very passionate and involved in both our reservoirs, it is very disheartening for me to stand by and watch all this time, money, and resources being spent on something that stemmed from a neighborly dispute. If we had united and focused this much energy on projects to improve the reservoirs, just imagine where we would be at this time. Thank you."
Jeff Lindsay, Gilbert Reyes, and Tom Miller.
Jeff Lindsay, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm gonna hand you what's marked Response Exhibit A and Respondents Exhibit B. Just one copy. You'll have to pass it. I apologize. But I think it's important to recognize that there legally, there's no distinction between a leaseholder who has lakefront property and a leaseholder who has off-the-lake property. The three options that are being proposed tonight don't remedy the issue regarding lots that are off-lakefront, but there's still a lease. And the parties, the leases are virtually identical as it relates to the language of an easement to use that property. So I think it's important for the board to hear that. I also think it's important for the board to recognize that we're talking about, you know, the parties producing permits to which I think there's understanding, and it may not be disputed, that for many years, there was no permit process in place. So two of the options that were talked about in the documents, but not presented as one of the three options, one is using the grandfather clause language. But something else that might be considered is, if it really is water and quality of water, why not replace the existing docks with city docks and be able to maintain those by the city? That's not necessarily the answer to everything. But I think it's important for the board to acknowledge that there's legally no distinction between on-the-lakefront property, leased property, and off-the-lakefront property, leased property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we go to Gilbert Reyes, Tom Miller, and then Dale Witwood, I believe.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Basically, back in 2003, purchased our lakefront property. At that time, the home was built back in the 50s, and has had three generations of families living, cleaning up the properties, and taking care of the lots and everything else. So my understanding was, from the get-go, is that we were able to use the lot as well as the existing lots and the docks. I spent about four or five years trying to get a permit for leasing the property, tried to get the permit for the dock. As a meeting that we had with Steve Rasmussen and Bobby L, we also mentioned we were willing to pay for a lease, we're willing to pay for a dock. So I found out yesterday that there had been a meeting going back to 2003 that did a survey of the residents that own lake property. I was not contacted at any point in time. I did not fill out a survey. So my question would be, how many lakefront property owners were contacted? Of that survey, was it 50%, 60%, 40%? Because it seems like that's what's being based for the decision tonight. And if it was only LBA, association members who were contacted, that may not represent the total amount of, basically, docks that are owned at Lake Bloomington. So I would ask for you to review those analyses that's created this. Because if there's only permits granted based on the wealth of the property, the location of the property, that would seem to me like it'd be discrimination. And I've already forwarded a certified email with additional details on that. So that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, Tom Miller, Dale Witwood, I believe, and then Sue Mizell.
I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity. My name is Tom Miller. My wife and I own a cabin at 25142 White Owl Lane. We have a dock and a cove at the end of the road where we have kept our pontoon boat moored at a pier structure since we have purchased the house in August of 2013. Before we purchased the house, it was advertised and shown as having its own dock and access to the lake. We would not have purchased the house if this was not the case. Needless to say, we were shocked when we received a letter in February of 2017 informing us that due to the location of our dock, that we were trespassing on city property. We attended a public meeting on May 3 at Davis Lodge, and Steve Rasmussen and Bob Yale stated that, starting in 1990, that the city started issuing dock permits to build structures on the lake. Our dock was there before 1990, so there is no permit. We were told that if our dock was there before 1990, that we need to prove past ownership through verbal or eyewitness testimony. We met with Steve and Bob on May 30, 2017, and proved to them that this structure has been used for over the last 30 years by the last three owners, by letters presented to us, and the purchase agreement from 1985 stating that dock can remain on the lake with the property. The city is asking dock owners with older docks provide documentation that does not exist. We have a lake lot lease. One of the water department's arguments against some of the docks is the question that we do not have lakefront lease, and ownership of the dock is by non-lakefront leaseholder. None of the leases differentiate whether the property is lakefront or not, nor do any of the invoices from the city of Bloomington for lakelot leases differentiate whether property is on the lake or not. The water department states that some of the troublesome boat docks are on non-leased marginal land. Looking at maps provided by the city, all boat docks are on non-leased marginal land, as there's easement around the whole lake. All property owners must cross the city easement to get to their docks, just like myself. What benefit is it to us to be paying a lake lease if we aren't allowed to access the lake from our own property? After a year of research, the water department came up with eight possible options to possibly resolve this matter. The water department staff, recommendation for this meeting, is only three of the eight options. None of the three options they want the council to make a motion are, are in favor of anyone possibly keeping their dock. I don't see any compromise happening on the department's behalf. Affected dock owners' property values stand to lose significant values of over 50% if the city chooses for them to remove their boat dock. The most logical step would be to have dock owners keep their docks as long as they are compliant with city code and move forward with new applications. Personally, I'd be happy with my dock grandfathered in, and be granted a dock permit to continue to use my dock and be able to make improvements. I'm planning on sticking around. As are so few people involved, I'd like to see the council decide that they will meet with each dock owner and decide on a case-by-case basis the merits of having their dock permitted, and not have one sweeping motion to cover everyone. Because residents of Lake Bloomington have no aldermen representing them on city council, I welcome conversation from any council member to further discuss this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dale Witwood? Are you Jane?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So there's Dale or Jane.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. This is in follow-up to the two emails I have sent the aldermen back in March 8, and then most recently, Sunday, the 8. And upon further review of all of this, the word that keeps coming to mind is reasonable. And with that, the advisory committee consisting of Steve Rasmussen, as well as the bill, had recommended three options. And those three options all were similar in nature of removing of the dock. And from the documentation that I've provided to all of you in our emails, is that we had followed the proper protocol and procedures back in 2006, when my husband and I proceeded with putting in place a new dock. We had originally gone to the city of Bloomington, and they directed us to speak to Craig M. Cummings. We brought to Craig the brochure of our dock, as well as the plans. He was familiar with where we were going to be putting in our dock. And after further review, he initialed the, he initialed our plans, which you all have a copy of. If he was not authorized, or if he was not acting on an agent on behalf of the city, then, you know, he should've let us know that. From his documentation or his signature of our plans, we proceeded with building our dock. dock. Again, you go back to a reasonable person would not put in place a dock back then consisting of approximately $50,000. If we overstepped our boundary, Craig knew about it, and he should have, or the city of Bloomington should have come to us and said, you know, this isn't compliant, you're not in ordinance, and you need to remove that dock immediately. We've had that dock now for over 10 years, and we have not had a problem with it until recently. And again, you go back to reasonable. What is in a reasonable length of time? 10 years later, there's now issues? I don't think that makes sense. And with that, I am in agreement with being grandfathered in for our dock to remain. I appreciate your time, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Sue Mizell, and then John. Actually, we may not have enough time. Sue Mizell, come forward.
Good evening. I'll be brief. I did send each of you aldermen an email with most of what I would say today. And attached to that, I did have a copy of our sale clearly showing the docks and access and also our appraisal indicating that our home is, the comparables were homes on the water, so it definitely would substantially reduce the value of my home if we lose our docks and our access. The home was built in '62. Docks have been in the cove associated to our home since that time. Clearly, that's a number of years that things have worked well. There's, we just kind of blindsided all this and feel like one size does not fit all. You don't punish your whole line of children because there's a situation that one of them has got going on. So I won't read my entire email that I sent to you, but clearly, removal of the docks, there needs to be an option that several of the other folks have mentioned in that if we can be grandfathered in and/or pay an additional fee to retain that little strip where our simple boat dock is, that would be my pray that you would consider that versus taking away what we truly bought. That would be devastating to many of our families and legacy for which we thought we were getting when we bought our home at the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, at this point, our time is up for public comment. I apologize to those of you who did not get to speak, but at this point, we're going to go ahead and move on. We have consideration and potential action or direction of various proposed options regarding existing boat docks or on non-leased marginal land at Lake Bloomington where ownership is claimed by non-lakefront leasers as requested by the water department. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Rasmussen, and then I believe he'll be turning it over to Mr. Yale.
Yes, I will. Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of city council. I wanted to go back and give you three things here. The first thing was when we begin to look at this in February of 2017, the action that was brought forth before the city council was an ordinance to codify what the water department's policy was. And that was to issue dock permits for docks that were on waterfront property but to not issue permits for docks that had been placed on city-owned parkland or city-owned property. That is what the city's water department policy had been, and the staff felt that it would be appropriate to codify that so that the city council then could act on that. And then, as opposed to being a water department policy, it would then be an ordinance that would direct the water department to do that on an ongoing basis. And that was to permit docks that were on waterfront property but to not permit docks that were on city-owned property. As a result of that, however, there was a lot of discussion, and council asked to go back and look at all of the docks that currently were on city-owned property, which was not part of what we were looking at. But since the council asked to go back, we went back and looked at that. So really, there are two issues. The one issue is what do we do on an ongoing basis? And that would be, the staff would bring back to you, the same ordinance that we had proposed a year and a half ago, and that is an ordinance on an ongoing basis in the future that the water department would issue permits for docks that were requested on waterfront property and that they would not issue permits for docks who are located on city-owned property. That's on an ongoing basis. But then the issue has come back up, and what is it that we would do with current docks that are in position that sit on city-owned property? And that is an issue now that is before the city council. There are eight options in talking with members of the city council. The three that you see there were the ones that we identified that the city council wanted to bring forward and talk about. However, I'd point out that you can do those, you can do any of the eight, you can do something else, or you can do none of those. Those are up to you. But what we have is we have provided for the opportunity in two weeks to come back with another ordinance if you so choose, and we could put another ordinance in place or not. And I've been asked by members of the city council, what would happen if you would do nothing? If you do nothing with those docks that currently exist, the staff would do what we do with all other situations where there is an issue that is non-conforming with city ordinance, and that would, we would issue a citation, and if the issue was not cured, then that would be sent to administrative court for adjudication. So we have a position, we have a process in place to take care of that should you not choose to do anything else. That's the action that the city council, that the city staff then would take. Having said that, it's up to you to do whichever you would like to do because you have all of those options at your disposal, and the city staff would stand ready to execute that decision you make. What I'd like to do now is give Bob Yale about five minutes or so to go over what the existing situation is to form a framework, and then the remainder of the 45 minutes that you have would be up for council decision, and we look forward for any guidance you may give us. Thank you. Bob?
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mayor and council. Steve's done a nice introduction and bringing us to the point where we started a year ago when we were in front of you. We since then had a public meeting. We since then spoke to many of the dock owners behind us. We've then spoken to people in favor of actions and all across the gamut. This topic really resides in three areas. These three areas encompass about everything we could talk about at Lake Bloomington. Protection of the water supply is first and foremost. Though you've heard already tonight in a different correspondence, what's one more dock? What's my dock do? Do docks harm water quality? To some extent, yes. Do boats? To some extent, yes. Do people? To some extent, yes. Should we focus on everything else that causes water quality issues? We do. Do we focus on nitrates? We do. Do we focus on erosion? We do. Do we focus on stream bank stabilization? We do. Do we fund or position the soil and water conservation? We do. Should we focus on boats, body contact, sports, and impacts of docks? Yes, we should. That's not saying the answer relies on the three options, as Steve said. Any and all those options can be applied to one or multiple groups, but we should focus on water quality first and foremost, and everything we talk about should hit water quality at some point. Consistent community development. In the packet, we've outlined the background, the ordinances, the standards, previous council action. We believe in the water department, we should apply those consistently sans any direction to the contrary from the city council. So we move forward providing consistent approaches to community development permitting at the lake. Some people say, maybe it wasn't permitted the same 20, 30 years ago, and that's probably true. We need to get a handle on it today, make sure everybody's on the same page moving forward. And providing access to all. I think I've spoken about before, when the lake was created, it was envisioned for multiple uses, multiple parties. We created lots that people were able to lease and live next to. We created access areas for boat ramps so people could fish and enjoy recreation. We created parks. We created nonprofit areas. We have to take into consideration what the lake was developed originally for, what it's evolved at over time, and understand somewhere in there, we need to make sure we're addressing those issues with everybody. There's those behind us. About half the docks on the list are non-city leaseholders. They own private land near the lake. They're not on the land. With that being said, I just want to spend one minute to refresh our memories of property ownership at Lake Bloomington. So blue is easy. Blue is water. Blue is the reservoir. Green and orange are city-owned land. The green in these pictures, and this is a graphical representation, that is a leasable or platted lot. So the greens are lots that we can lease out to our leaseholders. They can construct their homes and other infrastructure based on county and city guidelines. The red is marginal land, non-leased. There is a strip between the lots and the reservoir, and there's access areas that in 1950, the first time it came up, when it distinguished between on-the-lakefront leaseholders and off-the-lakefront leaseholders. In 1950, by ordinance council set, off-the-lakefront leaseholders have access to the lake, access, the ability to cross to the lake and enjoy the lake through the red land from their leased lot. So the leases are the same as we've heard tonight. Everybody has access to the lake. Let's imagine the left third looking at it, the green lots that go from the road to the red. Let's imagine those are purple. Purple, I'm going to imagine out loud, those are privately owned land near the lake. So private subdivisions, another landowner developed, sold lots, people built homes. About half the docks we're talking about reside in those areas. I don't have a map specifically like that in my presentation, but we could talk about that later. In those purple imagined lots, there is an access or public land. It's just simpler, similar to what's around Miller Park or one of our park areas or the inner loop. It's area set aside for the water department to be able to access through their maintainer trees, maintain our infrastructure, get to the lake. In those areas, if we mow it, we maintain it, we provide a fishing area, anybody can use those. So a little bit different than the access granted by a lease provision versus somebody that owns private property, whether it's some of these homeowners or the farmers. Lots of farmers own land around the lake that's adjacent to our non-leased marginal land. That was more than a minute. Current city code? We started coming back with a proposed change. This is one that outlines the basic starting point. You can't construct, build, maintain anything on marginal land or the reservoir without a permit. Simple as that. We did go through eight options. You can apply any and all of these eight options to different groups, different segments. We've heard people behind me say, everybody's different. You can apply that. Obviously, most of the feedback we heard from those behind me grandfathered me in or let us lease property. We did take that into consideration, talking with many different avenues and people as well as you around the table. We came up with the three options. Not going to take the time to read them all, but in the essence, we can refer them to administrative court, and they would be evaluated equally or individually. We can offer to buy them for an appraised value, take ownership, and then do with it what we want. In some cases, we would remove them. In some cases, we might make them into a public area. In some cases, we might move them to a different public area. This option reckons back to the 1977, '78 action of council where one leased, non-leased access area was leased to an adjacent leaseholder. It was brought to council's attention the next year. That was inappropriately done. It was against what was set aside in 1950, and council decided to rescind that lease. We heard tonight that some individuals, still that same year, went in and constructed seawalls, did grading, and essentially built a dock all the way across that. So essentially, taking the area that the council had, in their estimation, in error leased back and took that for themselves. So this option gives back to, we can make them whole, make it a public area again. Last one is give them a temporary permit for six months, let them get through the season, find a way to do. They choose none of those, we can individually look at them in administrative court. And as Steve said earlier, if you choose not to provide additional directions at this time, the water department administration will continue forth with our court ordinances, standards, guidelines. And so if you have a lakefront leaseholder, we would issue permits for docks within current criteria. If you do not, you're not a lakefront leaseholder, we would continue to not issue permits for those dock holdings. Questions and comments? I think I was right on.
Okay. Questions, comments for Mr. Yale? I think that's an indication that you did a comprehensive job. Thank you, Bob. You may want to stick around because there may be need for your expert opinion or advice.
I'll stay close.
Thank you. Alderwoman Hellman, and then Black.
I was just going to ask if Jeff or someone could do just a quick overview of administrative court so that folks in the audience know what that looks like and the purpose. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And we also have Greg Mordock on the phone who prosecutes cases in our administrative court. Greg, I think you're there correct?
Greg, can we hear you? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
And so if I say something incorrect, he can jump in here and correct me. But essentially, the process that they're talking about is they would issue citations, they give notice, and then if there's not compliance, it gets in front of a hearing officer who would then hear both sides of it. So you heard some conversation tonight about, you know, looking at everybody individually. Well, the hearing officer would be required to evaluate each case. You know, I'm sure they look at things as to whether or not, you know, permits had been issued, whether or not the dock was constructed in compliance with the permit, you know, those types of issues, the code provisions that Director Yale set up, and then the hearing officer would issue a decision. I believe the current fine is $250 a day, so there would be potential monetary fines associated with violating the current code provisions, and then there, you know, could be other things that the court could order. Greg, is there anything that you would add to that?
I would just specifically note that one of the things the court typically orders is abatement, which in this case would be removal of the docks. So in addition to the fines, the administrator, the hearing officer would also order that the docks be removed within 35 days if they're not permitted properly.
If the court found in our favor.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, it's out of order at this point, sir. I'm sorry.
Could I ask a follow-up?
Yep.
Would it be possible to have it some way so it wouldn't have to go through the not conforming process and being cited, just if somebody opted just to go straight to administrative court? Would that be a possibility?
Typically, there has to be a complaint filed first, so I would think you would issue that citation or that notice first. That's typically how the process is. And I was reminded, there's also, if the hearing officer here at City Hall were to find in favor of the city or vice versa, that can also be appealed then to the circuit court. So there is appellate protection within that process as well.
Thank you.
Alderman Black.
Thank you. And I think this question might be for Bob. I don't know where he went. There he is. I like the blue tie for the water department. It's nice. So over the last year, I know we've talked a lot about these issues. I know I've met with a number of folks and heard a lot of stories over phone and email and such. And it's a weird situation in that nobody up here represents the folks at Lake Bloomington, which makes this even more difficult. And as I've gone back to residents in Ward 7 about this topic, most folks are like, what are you talking about? And why can't you fix this road or do this thing in the area? But one recurring motif I continue to hear at neighborhood association meetings and stuff and those types of events has been, why is the city even allow any boats or docks on our water supply?
Sure. I think I'll take you back to the first three topics I talked about, water quality, consistent development, and access to all. I have to, from what I know, boating, recreation has been allowed from the beginning. So we have to take that consideration. What's the primary goal with the complementary uses and what are those impacts? It's been allowed for as long as I think the lake has been there. It was originally developed in slightly a different scenario. It might have been rowboats, it might have been sailboats. I know at one point, there was powerboat racing, is from what I understand, which if, I would envision the erosion we have now on our shorelines, what that did to our reservoir. So why are they there? I think they've been there. I think it hearkens a deep dive of discussion. The water department's of the opinion that there's good complementary and secondary uses. I wouldn't want to recommend that we remove all boats. But there's a lot of different reservoirs that take an approach in today's day and age and look at, should we only allow certain types of boats or certain types of engines? Should they all be electric? Should they all have to be four-stroke? Should they all be two-stroke with more or less pollution? There are some studies that I can go in, and I won't, but show quite a bit of gas and oil in older two-strokes create air and water pollution. Should it be just human-powered? There's lots of different discussions. I think that would be a lengthy discussion. That would be difficult to get everybody to agree, but it's certainly one worthy of continued effort. But to answer your question, they've been there for a long time. It looks like Steve's going to add to my comment.
Yeah, I would like to add and answer that question. Many modern reservoirs, when they establish a reservoir, they simply put a fence around it and do not allow any boating or housing so that we do not get into this situation. As you know, at Lake Evergreen, which is also part of a reservoir, we do not allow any houses. The reason that we have the situation we have now was in 1934 and '35 when we first started out there. It was not a big deal, and we allowed that to happen. It was not a big deal, and we allowed that to happen, and we allowed some houses to be built and some boating to be built, and that was not a problem 100 years ago. Now, the population's increased, the stress on the water is increased, and so we're confronted with what we have here today. So, how did we get there? Well, it just evolved that way from 100 years ago.
Sure. Thank you. I guess I could ask Mayor Renner that, you could have provided some insight of what was going on 100 years ago over at the lake.
Ouch! Good for myself. That's one of the nicer things that people say about me, so that's okay.
I'm just kidding. Thank you for that. I don't wanna get derailed on that conversation, 'cause that kinda doesn't really solve our issue in front of us this evening. I just know in Ward Seven, that question continues to come up again and again, and as water resources are always scarce and a concern of ours, we should be vigilant in protecting that resource. My opinion on this, if that's what staff is looking for, I'd be open to one or three. I think going to administrative court is one, is a solution that would force things to be on an individual basis. I also might recommend that we do a public hearing, maybe Planning Commission hosts it. I know there's some concern in the crowd, as some folks feel as though their story hasn't been told appropriately. A public hearing may allow that in a formal process that can take testimony, and we can include it in a final recommendation. But I agree, this is not a topic we shouldn't be lingering on. You know, I saw in option sample three, we picked six months. That seems pretty quick. You know, I would envision that being maybe at the end of summer of next year, 2019 perhaps, if we're looking to craft some final motions. Those are my thoughts, I appreciate your information.
Thank you. Alderman Matthew, and then Milowamboy.
So, thank you for putting this all together, Bob, I appreciate it. I've spent a significant amount of time talking to residents and people and staff and everybody else on this issue, and, man, there's so many different stories. I mean, it's ridiculous. One thing I just wanna point out that we didn't hear from tonight is that there are people who did not get a chance to speak tonight, who feel like there's a negative impact on their lakefront property because of the docks and the marginal land as well. So, there's a, you know, I was being asked about this last week for some people, and they were saying, "I don't understand why this is such a big deal." I said, "Well, because we have people who have, you know, unpermitted docks, who are, you know, telling us that they're getting their lawyers and they're getting ready." We have people who live on property that were their permitted docks, and they're getting their lawyers and getting ready, and we're just kinda stuck in the middle. So, it's a sticky situation. I would not be in favor of any solution that we put forward where we take sweeping action, one action applies to every dock. You know, we need to do something on an individualized basis. I think that there are definitely some folks that have very good arguments as to why they should be allowed to keep their docks. You know, we have past city employees who maybe didn't follow our own rules, and it's not the people who built docks' fault if we didn't follow our own rules. That's my personal opinion on that. So, you know, I sent a long email to all the council after a meeting that I had had with a bunch of folks that are represented here tonight, and I would like us to see a solution where we take the number of docks that we're talking about here, and we divide them up, and council work as one or twos, and we actually go and meet with them on individual basis and work through that process as well. That would be my preference, that we do this, is that we treat each individual as their own separate circumstance. You know, I know we have a lot of stuff coming forward in the future with water, water quality, the depth of the water in the reservoir, and our long-term or future water supplies. So, we have a lot of things to worry about with water, you know, but I think that we need to treat folks correctly upfront, and make sure we take into the real human considerations that we had people who did things wrong. There are people who are here that, quite frankly, did things wrong, you know, but there's a balance, I think, that we can strike in the middle there. Thanks.
Alderman Milowamboy.
Okay, thank you. This is really a complicated issue, but I, what I wanted to ask you first of all, Bob, is what happens in terms of health-related issues with the docks being on water or wherever they are?
So, docks bring boats, and docks bring body contact ports, potentially swimming, sailing, jet skiing, some of those types of things.
No jet skis.
Not jet skis. The same point. So, American Water Works Association, which is a national organization, indicated in 2017, body contact recreation and two-cycle gas engines should be discouraged or prohibited on drinking water supplies. You can go through many different EPA guidelines, you can go through DNR, you can go through different research. You can go all the way to California, which, except for a couple of reservoirs, restricts all recreation on any drinking water reservoir. So, what does happen? Boats, let's talk boats. They can create sediment problems, phosphorus problems, they can destroy the vegetation on the bottom of the lake, especially in low, shallow areas. We have some low areas where we have docks. So, take your boat into the shallow area, your propeller's going to do what? Move the water, stir the water, move the sediment, creates turbidity, creates phosphorus. Turbidity is one of our stringent controls that we have to treat and keep out of the water. In fact, with all the rain, which was great because we could fill up our reservoirs, required us to pump from a different reservoir because they brought in so much sediment at that time. It also creates phosphorus from the soils, the erosion from the banks. Phosphorus helps algal blooms. I don't know if many of you tasted our water in the fall and winter, it wasn't that pleasant. We got lots of calls and concerns, we got to talk through taste and odor concerns, algal blooms, and what we're doing to try to make that better. So, boats can create those issues. Body contact ports, whether it's just swimming or skiing, or jumping off the end of a dock, increases the likelihood of pathogens in the water, increases the likelihood. We treat the water certainly, I can't guarantee we get them all, there's always that potential. So, body contact ports are also a large issue as well. You can see stabilization in this picture. So, the waves, action, some from boats, some from nature. We spend $200,000 a year stabilizing our shorelines. I could go on a little farther, I don't know how in-depth you'd like me to go.
And is there any negative effects from the docks themselves?
The docks themselves, presuming that there's no boat on the dock or nobody's jumping off the dock. A lot of our docks are on seawalls, so the shoreline's stabilized, so a lot less impact. There are some docks that are hooked directly to the shoreline itself. When that installation occurs, when that use occurs, it has the greater potential for, again, erosion and disturbance of the natural habitat around the lake. We would prefer to have our lake encompassed with buffer strips, vegetative buffer strips of 20, 30 feet wide, so that anything that had to go through it was filtered, the sediment dropped out, we didn't have access to it. So, yes, there are some incremental disturbances from docks, depending on how they're constructed and where they're specifically constructed at.
Thank you. Alderman Burgess, and then Schmidt.
I just have a question about sample motion number two, or sample option number two. That's the one that refers to purchasing the docks at a fair market value.
Yes.
Do we have a cost to the city associated with that yet?
We'll estimate approximately no more than $40,000. We did have appraisals done on a sampling of docks, approximately six of them, and they range generally in the $2,000 to $3,000 range. One or two significantly higher based on the construction of them, but most of them were fairly inexpensive, as we heard earlier, you know, put in from big box stores and nothing of high value.
Okay. Alderman Schmidt.
Bob, could you, we've heard a number of people here tonight talk about grandfathering the docks in, and that was an option that didn't make it to the top. Could you talk a little bit more about why that's a bad option? To just say, "Okay, your grandfathered in, that's it, no more docks, we're done."
From our perspective, you asked staff to enforce the guidelines, ordinances, council actions in place. So, that's where those options came from, from our point of view. We feel that the options we presented are within those guidelines, ordinance, and past practice. You can change that. To your question, it sets a precedence that I don't know that we want to set. It would set a precedence not only at Lake Bloomington, but keep in mind, the same ordinance that governs Lake Bloomington governs the city of Bloomington. So, if you're setting a past practice of grandfathering in docks, the lake, just take in consideration there are other issues, not only at Lake Bloomington, but across the city, that may be impacted or come before you in the future.
And then, just to clarify, if we do nothing, that is, the council does nothing, does not act this evening, then the default would be going to administrative court, and those things would be handled on an individual basis? Is that correct? So, if we are concerned about some of the individual nuances of individual cases, one action might be to do nothing? Is that, is that, is that an incorrect statement?
Yeah, that's right. I think that what the water department has said is, if there's no other direction, it's their intent to begin the process of evaluating what's out there, begin citing, issuing citations, and bringing these forward in administrative court at some time period in the future.
And there are different variables that people would, that the hearing officer would take into account in each of the specific instances and cases?
I would assume so, yes. Yeah, I think you're gonna hear arguments, obviously, from the people who are operating the docks or who claim to have permits. So, I think each case is gonna be different, you're gonna hear a lot of different stories, and each case will be then judged on an individual basis in front of the hearing officer. Now, that said, obviously, that could take some time, that's not gonna be an overnight thing. It's gonna take staff time, obviously, legal time, the hearing officer time, administrative court time. So, that's not gonna be a quick process, but that is a similar process community development uses, you know, other departments within the city utilize when there's a code violation.
So, in that situation, people wouldn't be grandfathered in, but their individual circumstances would be taken into account on a case-by-case basis?
That's right. And if we went to administrative court and the hearing officer said, you know, that, you know, they think that the, you know, we don't have a case, or the dock is there lawfully, then, you know, we'd have to either decide whether or not to appeal that, or just to let that decision stand, and, you know, there might be some that come forward where they say it's okay to be at its location, and there might be some where, no, there's no right for it to be there. It's hard to predict what would happen with that.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Okay. Is there a motion? And again, at the end of the day, if there's no motion, then the current practices stand. There doesn't have to be. Alderman Black?
I guess I understood this to be that we are gonna give staff direction and not make a motion this evening.
I think direction by motion is fine, though, if you want.
Yes.
Okay.
Or not.
I'll make a motion for sample option three, with a caveat that instead of six months, it's 18 months.
It's not so much a caveat, that would be an amendment.
Amendment.
Okay.
My mistake.
So, then essentially, it would be an amendment. You're moving option three with changing the sixth to 18. Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Of course.
Okay. How would that be different from doing nothing?
Well, I think that pretty much basically tells staff there's gonna be a grandfathering period of 18 months, where we're not gonna be issuing citations, we're not gonna be out there doing that. Obviously, no new permits are going to be issued during that period of time, but it's gonna be at least 18 months, so it would get through two more summers where people could utilize their docks, and they've got 18 months to get rid of them, make arrangements to start getting rid of them, and then if they're not within 18 months, then we could go in there and start citing them. So, I think the biggest difference there is time, the time that that allows.
And it's also, if I'm understanding it, it's not a case-by-case basis necessarily?
As it's written, I'm sorry, as it's written, the intent is, we offer that option to the dock owners. If they enter into that permit for 18 months, then we've got that, I guess, agreement in writing. If they choose not to enter into an 18-month permit in this case, then we would just need to cite them and take them to administrative court. I think that's the second half of that motion, as it's written.
After 18 months.
Well, if they choose at this point not to, we could do that. It's written right now that if they choose not to enter a permit, but you can amend it, obviously, and say, "We don't want you to even issue a permit in 18 months," then you can start dealing with it. But in 18 months, this is what you should do, they should come out, or you should cite and work through them individually.
Okay, right. Alderman Burgess.
I just wanna make sure I understand, so if we were to approve this, every case eventually will be determined on a case-by-case basis, whether it happens now because they didn't wanna sign into the 18-month extension, or after the expiration of the 18 months? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
I would presume that would be correct, because my presumption, again, is that the dock owners, even after 18 months, still wouldn't, some of them may not still agree to remove them at that time.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so then, we're going back to the, we have a motion. Is there a second to that motion? Oh, no.
I'm seeing some puzzled looks.
Okay. If there's not a second, the motion dies of a second. Okay, the motion dies of a second. Okay. Are there any other motions or guidelines? Again, if we don't act, then the default is the staff will act on an individual basis, and these will be determined on an individual basis with a variety of variables in administrative court. Alderman Matthew.
Well, I just, same thing as I said earlier, is I would like to, you know, the folks that have lakehold leases, I would like to see council divide those ones up. It's, I don't know if it's eight or nine of those, and work with them individually to see, 'cause I, you know, I think that there's different circumstances for each one of those, and we could actually sit down, work with them, and then bring back recommendations to the rest of the council. You know, as an example, if Dave and I, we were assigned a couple of docks, we would meet with those folks, and both the folks that had the docks and the lakeholder, lakefront permits on either side, find out what the situation that dock is, and bring it back to council, and then make a recommendation from there for those particular docks that we had been assigned. I mean, I think that'd be...
Isn't, how is that different from what administrative court would do?
I guess, I don't know. It seems to me, as soon as we say we're going to administrative court, we're citing people, the first thing that happens with a cite is it starts off with a fine, right? And I don't know that I'm comfortable starting everything off with a $250 a day fine, before we even get to administrative court.
Okay. Alderman Painter.
Thank you. If we do nothing, how is that different from option one?
Mr. Yale? There's no difference. That's...
Okay.
We're just, you asked us to come back with some options, and that was one option we presented for discussion.
All right. And we've been at this for over a year. I think it's time we got on with it. And I would make a motion for option one.
Is there a second? That does not stop any discussion. Is there a second to option one?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Alderman Bray. Okay. Did you wanna speak to that any further? Okay. Alderman Bray?
Yes, I seconded the motion, because I appreciate everyone coming out here and talking with us. These are tough issues, and I think they do need individual attention by a consistent fact-finder and decider, if you will, which is what we could see from the administrative law approach versus breaking it up among the council members. I just fear inconsistency there, just because it wouldn't be the same kind of approach necessarily. So, I think that would be the most even-handed manner in which to handle it. I'm swayed by the commentary saying, you know, folks need to live in a healthy community with some predictability, and get this behind us. So, I appreciate the comments that were made about the fact that, you know, folks would just like for this to be over with, and that's why I've seconded this motion for option one.
Alderman Hellman.
Is it possible to waive the daily fine if we go with the administrative court routine?
Yes, in administrative court, it's not uncommon, you know, if we get abatement, a lot of times, we'll lower, discount, or waive the fines. So, this is something that, you know, I think if this was the direction that you give staff, we'll go back and come up with a plan as to how we're going to approach this. I don't think it's gonna be our intent to have, you know, every what is considered illegal dock in the court on the same day. We're gonna have to go out there and figure out which ones we're going to, you know, cite and issue and bring in front of the court, and this, like I said before, this'll be a process, it'll take some time. The goal here is, I think, compliance, much like with our administrative court on housing, it's not to collect a bunch of money from people, it's about compliance. So, that will be the approach that we would take.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Okay. Well, we have a motion on the table, and I wonder if everyone can, and this, would we be better off doing a voice vote?
Oh, no, you can.
We can, okay, all right. Everyone will go ahead and vote, we have a motion on the table. If anyone will go ahead and vote, we have a motion on the table.
Turn it up, yeah.
Oh, thank you, sorry. Okay. Whoops. There we go. The motion carries seven to two. There are two nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Mathie and Alderman Black.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, and thank you all for your work on this issue. Okay. Thank you now. I'm sorry, Alderman Schmidt, did you have a question? Oh, okay. All right. Mr. Rasmussen?
Yes, I think that that was the only issue that we had on our special agenda tonight, and so I wanted to thank the council for their time on this, and we've worked on it for a year and a half. It is very, very difficult, and all of us who have worked on it have great sympathy on everybody who has docks at the lake, both lakefront and non-lakefront, and we appreciate the time that you have all spent for it, and we will look forward to having some issues adjudicated there here on a case-by-case basis. We thank you very much for your time.
Sure. Thank you so much. Okay, at this point, is--
Could I make one comment or question?
I think at this point, I'll go ahead and allow it, sure.
It all relates to the--
As long, yeah, yeah.
It does. I guess my question is, and I think I know the answer, are the realtors being brought up to date on how to present the property that they're selling?